Okay, good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Millbrae Planning Commission.
Recording in progress.
Okay, let's do this again. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Millbrae Planning Commission. Today is July 17, 2023. We have, I think, our normal procedure is usually this is broadcast on MCTV. However, Roscoe, can you give us an update on the technology?
Yes, thanks, Chair Wong. We're having some, a little bit of a technical difficulty, and for people who want to participate remotely or virtually, you have to use a call-in, so that would be the best way to participate remotely. And the broadcast feature is, it won't be available tonight.
Okay, so, again, like to call the meeting to order. We have a little bit of technical difficulty, but for those who are viewing or trying to view online, hopefully, they'll be able to call in with the same Zoom ID and information. Okay, with that, can we take a roll call, please?
Commissioner Chan. Commissioner Del Negro.
Present.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Vice Chair Quigg. Chair Wong.
Present. And now, next on the agenda, we have the Pledge of Allegiance. And Roscoe, do you have somebody that can lead us in that?
Sure, I can, I can lead.
Okay, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item one on our agenda is Agenda Review. We have this agenda in front of us. Are there any changes or comments on the agenda for tonight? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to Agenda Item Number Two, Approval of Minutes for Special Meeting Minutes of June 21, 2023. Commissioners, do you have any comments, edits, corrections to the meeting minutes of June 21?
I'm more than happy to make a motion to approve the minutes.
All second.
Okay, one last call. If there's no other comments, corrections, edits, okay. Then can we take a vote on approval of the minutes?
Commissioner Chan.
Yes.
Commissioner Del Negro.
Yes.
Commissioner Davis.
Yes.
Vice Chair Quigg. Chair Wong.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Okay, moving in right along to Agenda Item Number Three. We have Public Communications. This is reserved time for any persons wishing to comment, either in person or via remotely, for any item not appearing on the agenda. Public Communications is limited to not more than each speaker for three minutes. Do we have anybody wishing to make a public comment? None, seeing none in the room? How about online?
I don't see any hands.
Okay, with no public comments, then I believe we can move right along to Agenda Item Number Four, then, right? For public hearing? Okay, so, public hearing, we have a few items on our agenda tonight. There are two items, A for 400 East Millbrae Avenue and B for 866 Crestview Drive. And then later on, we'll have new business for Park League Design Guidelines. For now, Roscoe, I spoke a little bit earlier before we go into Item A. Roscoe, did you have something?
Yeah, before we begin the public hearing for this item, in honor of Commissioner Del Negro's last meeting with us, we have a little treat for the commissioners this evening, which Carmen will bring out in a little bit. So, yeah, hope this meeting, it's a bittersweet for us. We've had, we've had a lot of, we've enjoyed you on the commission, but we'll be sad to see you leave.
More than grateful.
Sometimes we're in a rush to get to the meeting. If you haven't had dinner yet, begin to dessert. But, yeah, I'd like to recognize throughout this meeting Christopher, Commissioner Del Negro's contributions to the City of Millbrae. I know he was on the Park and Rec Commission before, and he's been very diligent, very thorough in reviewing the plans and really helping steer Millbrae with his comments, insights, and recommendations for a lot of the design reviews and reports in the last year. Roscoe, did you have anything further to say on that?
Later on in the evening, yes, during the staff updates, yeah.
Okay, so, thank you. We'll have more time throughout the meeting. Commissioner Del Negro, we recognize your contribution. For the first item here for 400 East Millbrae Avenue, in the interest of transparency, fairness, and diligence, for question for commissioners, like to just make this statement before each hearing Agenda Item. Have there been any outside communications or ex parte communications with applicants or stakeholders or city staff for this project that might warrant disclosure or need for identify of any conflict of interest?
I did, I did have a meeting with city staff earlier today, and I also, you know, reached out to Sierra Club and Audubon folks on what they thought about this, and they said they were going to send something in, and it seems like they did.
Thank you for that disclosure, Commissioner. And so, let's move on to Roscoe with the staff report.
Yeah, thank you, Chair Wong, and members of the Planning Commission, Roscoe Mado, Planning Manager. I'm making the presentation and will be presenting this project on behalf of our contract planner. This item for A is 400 East Millbrae Avenue. This is a new electronic billboard on the city's property at the wastewater treatment plant. And the subject here is a public hearing on assigned permit, condiscuse permit, and design review permit, which are the entitlements to permit the electronic billboard. And then additionally, the action tonight includes action on the mitigated negative declaration. The project location, as I mentioned earlier, is at 400 East Millbrae Avenue. It's in the Millbrae Station area specific plan, Zone PF, Public Facilities. Here's a map that shows that location. It's just to the east of Highway 101 and north of Millbrae Avenue. The project is specifically located on the northwest part of the site. It's denotated here in the, in this, with the red arrow, approximately where the existing oak tree is. And the new billboard is 45 feet tall and will measure 14 feet by 48. Here's a little bit of a zoomed-out view that shows its location with respect to the wastewater treatment plant. And the picture on the right shows the location where the billboard will be. But here's the site plan that shows the precise location of the billboard. The billboard will be projecting inwards to the east, next to the Highway 101. Here's kind of the, kind of the dimensions of the proposed billboard. Here are the proposed renderings, viewing northbound and southbound, what you would see. It's kind of shown in black here. There are some additional renderings that show a little bit more of the details that the city council had requested the applicant to provide, but this is a general location in context with the surroundings. Providing a little bit more detail, the post or the, of the billboard will be white with gray and have the Millbrae logo. And the one on the right is not an oncoming sign or anything. It's, it's just kind of a simulation showing what it would look like at night, but there is just going to be one, one billboard sign with the one, actually, it's going to be two-faced, so the Millbrae logo will be on both sides. With respect to the neighborhood consultation, there's a total of three neighborhood consultation forms that were sent out. We didn't receive response from one of them, and then the other two were agnostic to the project. There are findings that have to be made. As I mentioned, design review, condition use permit, and sign permit findings. They can be found in the staff report in the resolution. Here's the design review permit findings, which specifies that location, number, size, scale, and design, lighting, and materials, and colors harmonize, harmonize or compatible with the immediate surroundings. And then a couple of condition use permit findings that are specified in Municipal Code 10.052520. I won't go into and mention, or read them out, but you can find them in the resolution. And then the sign permit findings, that the location, number, size, and scale, and design, lighting, and materials, their harmony with the surroundings and compatible with the existing buildings. As I mentioned earlier, there was a mitigated negative declaration that was prepared, and there is a mitigation monitoring reporting program regarding the environmental impacts. They were found to be less than significant with the adoption of the mitigation measures, and that the SEQA requires that the, all the impacts that are identified be mitigated, and as a result of those mitigations, the impacts are less than significant. And the mitigation monitoring program can be found in Attachment Seven of the packet. So, in conclusion, staff recommends to the Planning Commission, consider adopting a resolution approving the design review permit, condition use permit, and sign permit to allow the installation of electronic outdoor billboard or advertising display sign at the city property located at 400 East Millbrae Avenue, and subject to the findings in Attachment One and conditions of approval in Attachment One, Exhibit A, adopting the mitigated negative declaration for the project. Before I conclude, I'd like to mention that I'm also joined by the applicant Jeff McEwen from Outdoor, I'm sorry, Outfront, and then also our SEQA consultant, Elizabeth Johnson, from FCS. Staffs available to answer any questions?
Yes, so, let's have this time for any Commissioner, questions for clarification?
Sorry, just for the, just for the, before I, for, I forgot to mention that the staff did receive a letter from Sierra Club, as mentioned earlier, this afternoon, after the packet was out, obviously, and that correspondence was distributed to the commission.
So, if I understand correctly, this is an additional sign in addition to the one that's already there on the other side?
That's correct.
They seem like they're pretty close together, or is it just my imagination?
Well, there's, will be two.
Would one be competing with the other? I mean, when you're going on a freeway, you can only see so much, and the other one seems like it's, how many feet away is it?
Catherine, if you could speak more into the mic?
Yeah. What is the distance between the two?
They're more than 1,000 feet away, I believe. I'll have to get the exact measurements. I can, I can pull that up, but, yeah, they're, they're at least, they're over 1,000 feet away.
Yeah, it just seems like, I don't know, I just, I was hoping, I know it didn't say it, but I was hoping the other one would go away, and we would have this one that would be larger and more visual or something, so, okay.
Anybody else? Nathan?
Yeah, I have a, a number of questions, so, in terms of the, so, the, both the mitigated negative declaration and the staff report mentioned that the likelihood of driver distraction would be low or not, you know, it wasn't an issue, correct? Okay, so, I'm, based on the, the photos that were provided in Attachment Nine, I could use a little bit more help with that. So, for example, southbound, the billboard is on the opposite side of the freeway, so you would have to take your eyes away from the road in order to look at the sign. And then, northbound, like, I was kind of wondering how much of the sign would be visible from the overpass because of the Millbrae Avenue overpass. And at least, I mean, this photo is, is kind of zoomed in to show, that, that's on the screen right now. It's zoomed in to show, like, to not show the overpass, but it's, you're pretty much under the overpass by the time the sign is visible, so it seems like you only get to see the sign for, I don't know, a second or two if you're going northbound, so I'm, is, is that really, like, and it just, you know, it'll appear, right? So, depending on how bright it is, it could, it feels to like it could be a distraction late at night, so I could use a little bit of help understanding, like, one, is it safe? And two, like, what's actually the value of a sign that you can basically only see from 50 feet away? Like, you're on top of the sign by the time you see it?
So, you're really referring to the, actually, north?
Sorry, that's, did I say southbound?
I apologize. Actually, I think these are inverted. The north's supposed to be on the right.
Right, yeah, so, yeah, exactly, yeah. Yeah, so, yeah, in that case, so, I mean, the, you will see the billboard from afar, obviously, as you're approaching Millbrae Avenue in, in Millbrae. You will see that from a distance. Then, as you cross under the Millbrae, the overpass, Millbrae Avenue, you know, your, the view would be obstructed for a little bit. I don't know how long that would be, and then you'd come out along the other side. Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't, we've, don't believe that that's going to be a safety issue. You are going to be aware of it before you even approach the, the Millbrae Avenue overpass. And, you know, once you're already aware of it, yeah, it, it, your, your sights are still directly ahead. You're not really looking at the billboard the entire time, similar to other, you know, other billboards. I mean, are you sure? Like, the angle, like, at least the angle in this drawing, it feels like you really, you would have to be, like, it would either be, the sign would be either, either so tiny because you're so far away, you're like way back from the overpass that you could actually see that, see it, and then the overpass would block, block the part of the sign that's visible, and then, or the overpass would block it, and the only time you got a clear, close-up view of the sign is when you're going underneath the overpass.
So, Commissioner Chan, I would suggest that these questions about the use and economics of the board may be best.
Oh, sorry, I wasn't sure what.
Yeah, the applicant, the applicant's here can also speak and probably.
I would suggest, after these clarification comments, we'll have the applicant come up if they have a presentation, and then they can answer these questions.
All right, sounds good.
Okay, a couple of questions. Size comparison to the other sign? How big is the other sign? So.
Yeah.
Same size screen width-wise as well, okay. The structure itself, it's only got one pole, it's on one side, is that correct? All right, talk about that maybe a little later. There's an existing tree, we're pulling the tree out?
Yeah, we're removing the tree, but the applicant has agreed to replace that tree with two more trees somewhere on the site.
On the site?
Correct.
And I guess I kind of was also curious about the visualization from the on-ramp itself. As you come around that corner and you're coming down the on-ramp, it can be visible through the fence that we have? We have a visualization barrier fence, and if that angle allows for visualization?
Do we have one?
Well, you can see it behind, in the southbound picture here, that's really the northbound. Now, when you're on that, that lane to the far right, would you be able to see that from the car getting on the freeway?
Getting on to the freeway from?
From Millbrae Avenue.
From Millbrae Avenue, yes.
You got that fence on your side between you.
That's correct, yeah.
Kind of worried about the angle.
Yep.
And is, I guess, we'll talk to applicant about the transition of interval of how often the picture is allowed to be flipped and changed, right? Okay, so, we'll wait for that. That's it for me.
Okay, anybody else for city staff, questions for city staff? Okay, do we have a presentation from the applicant?
Good evening. Name's Jeff McEwen with Outfront Media. I was involved in the previous project over there near the Aloft back in 2014, 2015. We completed the sign just before the Super Bowl, which greatly benefited the city as we were able to generate quick revenue for the city. And since that sign's inception back in late 2015, the city has been provided over $4 million worth of revenue based on that one sign. With last two years, we were approached through our partnership with the city by Public Works to try and come back with another opportunity. They asked if we were interested in the site. We looked at it. It was a challenging site, but we felt like we could, we could build on the site. Specifically, where the tree is, is really the only place that we could build a sign that would not interfere with the events that would go on at the, at the treatment plant. So, that's where we are today. But we've, we've worked hard with the city on this project and with some of the things that we've brought to the Planning Commission tonight. Happy to answer any other questions that you may have, and some, Mr. Chan, your questions specifically. If you want to just start reeling them off, I'm happy to answer.
Right, so, kind of the same, just recapitulating what I asked before, you know, it's, at least based on this visual in this photo, it feels to me like you would not be really be able to see the sign from very far away. You would only be able to see the sign from very far away, whereas you're just about to go on to the underpass, because otherwise, under the overpass, because otherwise, the overpass is blocking your view of the sign.
That's correct. When we originally were looking at this site, we proposed that as a static display, non-digital. The city's goal in this was to generate more revenue for the city and for the, you know, the, the free time that the city gets to promote events. So, we went back to the city and said, we will do it. It, it won't generate as much revenue as the southbound sign, but we believe that, you know, to answer your question, there was, it changes every eight seconds, and the traffic there is very slow northbound, and we believe that the advertisers will consider looking at it, because it is, once you get underneath the overpass, it's very visual. You know, the sign's close to the freeway, right up against the border of the property line, and we, we think it'll be fine, and will just, it'd be perfect for generating more revenue for the city, because you get eight advertisers versus one.
Okay, while I have the, have time, you know, it feels like over the last year, like, digital signs have been in the news a lot, like, you know, San Jose was, had a debate, was having a debate about putting billboards there, and Gilroy had a similar thing. They were both published in the Mercury News. I don't know, how would you compare, and it seems like Outfront was involved with that also?
Yep.
How would you compare the proposal before us today versus the proposals that were in front of those cities? And, you know, how that, yeah, like, and especially, like, I think San Jose was also an adjacent to airport sign?
Correct. Yeah, we were involved in the Gilroy proposal. Two different things, two different outcomes on that, and really, most cities that are looking at putting digital signs on their own property is to generate revenue and for public messaging. In the city of Gilroy, the focus was use for local businesses only. They, they did not, they weren't really interested in generating revenue, they just wanted, is the sign going to be used by outside businesses or, or, or local? And they decided it just wasn't something they wanted to do at this point, so that was not approved by the city council. In this case, I think the city's looking to generate revenue, and, and that's where, you know, we've got signs all up and down the peninsula. We've been awarded a sign down in San Jose, along with the two that are already been approved by the airport. And we have a sign in South San Francisco and a couple in San Carlos and Santa Clara, and the main purpose of all of those were to generate revenue for the city.
That revenue figure that you gave us earlier?
Yep.
Is that since the sign, the, the other sign was built, or is that an annual number, the $4 million?
No, that's, that's since the sign was built in 2015, $4 million to, to, a little more than $4 million to the city.
And I'm not sure if this question is more appropriate for the environmental consultant for you, but, you know, there's growing awareness of the, the public, the health impacts and ecological impacts of, you know, artificial light pollution. What sort of, with that in mind, right, what sort of measures are being proposed for the sign to mitigate and limit that?
Yeah, I'll give you my information, but mostly with the SEQA consultant is where you'd want to propose those questions, but in, on this site, it's roughly a little over 500 feet in length on the freeway frontage. The sign's going to be basically placed about in the middle, 250 feet. Our signs are only measured, you only pick it up with a light meter from 250 feet away. So, anything beyond that, there's absolutely no, it will not read on a, on a meter at all. And the ambient light at night is, you know, it adjusts to the ambient light at night, so it dims. It's burning its brightest in the day, but still not, it's like 3.3-foot candles, it's in technical terms, that I'll, I'll let the SEQA consultant explain in a little more detail, but there should be no effect, because it's really going to be visual only to the people on the, on the site itself, and there's, I think, across the freeway, it's an off-ramp and, and trees and things like that, so there's no residential effect whatsoever, or businesses.
Okay, and then, finally, one of the things that we, I saw in the letter from the C, from Sierra Club, was turning the billboard off between 11:00 PM and 8:00 AM. In terms of, like, the economic effect of that, what would it be? Like, what kind of trade-off are we looking at here?
It would be an impact based on revenues, because the advertisers are used to buying digital signs 24 hours a day. It's based on impressions, and if you turn that off, say, midnight to 5:00 AM, there's still, you're going to probably lose about 10% of the impressions in a 24-hour period, and that, we would have to sell it as whatever, 19-hour performance versus 24, so there'll be an impact financially to that sign.
Okay, thanks.
Happy to offer a couple more questions. Eight-second transitions? That's a fairly fast turnover of time. Obviously, people driving by might see one or two of the rotation in the period that they're going across, but oftentimes, that transition is what's, I guess, most bothersome to people locally, is it transitions too fast. Eight seconds feels like a fast turnaround. The other sign is on eight seconds as well?
All the signs are eight seconds.
All the signs are eight seconds? That's kind of like the norm.
Yeah, and in fact, the, I think it's the Caltrans code, is it cannot happen more than every four seconds, but the industry standard is eight, and there's no fading in or out once the transition, it's immediate, so lessens the impact of, you know, distraction.
Second question is, will you be able to see the sign from the lot, from the hotel that's on the other side of Millbrae Avenue?
No, we don't believe so. It's, it's only 45 feet tall, so it's lower. When we worked with the FAA for approval, we originally, I think, were at 50 feet, and we lowered it to 45 to get, to gain FAA approval.
Okay, I guess I'm more worried about the hotel on our, on Millbrae property there, our Millbrae's city. Okay, I guess I'm more worried about the hotel on our, on Milbury property there, our Milbury's city loft hotel and stuff.
Yes.
They will have a visualization of the sign across the on-ramp or the Milbury Avenue. Is the trees going to block it, you won't be able to see it due to the trees that are?
From the A Loft to see the new sign?
Yes, across.
I don't think you can see the, the new sign from?
The hotels over there?
From the hotel.
Right, I was just wondering whether or not the trees that we may be mitigating the loss of one may be best utilized in a way to try and protect light effects on other businesses on that side who don't need to see the sign.
Yeah, and I guess that would be up to the city, the Public Works, on where they want us to place the, the new, whether it's on that property or anywhere else in the city. I'm not sure where they, they want to designate that.
So it'd be city decision on where the trees go?
Yeah.
The structure, the post being so pushed off to one side seems a very unbalanced feeling to me. In fact, it feels like, you know, the sign's very heavily over. Is there a reason why that post isn't more centered?
It, it, there was no place to put the post, as you know, or maybe not, the, the whole area there is, there's a lot of underground on that facility. And we had to find the right spot where there would be no interference with anything at the facility. And most of our signs actually are built that way where they're, they're, in fact, the one at the other one is not quite as flagged. We call it a flag look. It's a little bit more off-center, but it's not dead center. And most of them, it's just a matter of where you can actually drill a hole and, and on the property and then make the sign work. But it's obviously.
And the sign has to stay in the vertical over the property, you can't.
Right, right.
Right. I asked that question about whether you would be able to see the sign on the on-ramp in a car, the average car height, as you're coming around that corner underneath the overpass, will you be able to see it?
I think you would pick it up at the end, I mean, it's, because you're so far to the right and up against the fence line.
Yeah.
I don't know that anybody would actually, that we wouldn't use that as a impression most likely because I don't think it's going to be that visible.
I think this sign, what, what reason I ask is because this sign, in fact, if it's really being used in some part, advertised to Milbury residents, that's probably the, the opportunity they're going to have the best to see it.
Right.
Going on the freeway from Milbury rather than the other sign, which is usually when you're getting off the freeway northbound, you see it very clearly.
Right.
I use it all the time to get information about Milbury, what's going on locally when they're advertised up there. So it seems like we maybe don't have the opportunity to use it as heavily towards serving our communication to residents.
Right.
That's it for now.
Okay, any other questions for the applicant?
To reiterate my feeling that one is so close to the other one that I think it might be distracting to people on the freeway. You're seeing this one and then you're seeing that one and you're not finishing this one. What kind of studies have you done on that?
Well, we have, there are a lot of signs that are within 1,000 feet or even 500 feet. If it wasn't digital, it'd be just a 500-foot spacing according to state regulations. And we've never had any distraction issues presented to us. That might be a question more for the sequel consultants if they have any history on that.
I've just not been, signs are not my favorite thing. I think they're very distracting and I'm glad to see they're making money. But on the other hand, I, I think it clutters up the environment, it clutters up the trees and, you know, it just.
Understood.
Not my cup of tea, I fought the other one too.
We can have more discussion after questions. If the commissioners don't have any other questions, I actually have a question. So for the billboard that has a northbound and southbound sides, would it be displaying the same image on both sides? Or could you like advertise or get clients to advertise like if everybody wants to have on, on the southbound? Because obviously they don't have the obstruction of the bridge.
Yeah, they're sold separately. So a lot of people will want San Francisco-bound traffic and others San Jose-bound. So it's, they're all individually sold. We sell up to eight spots per side. So the goal would be to have all 16 available and sold. So it's, it's, it's random, it just depends on who's buying at the time, promotional events and such.
And then also, you know, this is in close proximity to the airport. Trying to address the Sierra Club's concerns about habitat. But to my understanding, there's no open space in front of the billboard on the northbound side, correct? And even on the southbound side, there's not really any sensitive habitat, is there open space that would, or that? But what about the airport, you know, restrictions, they said that they don't have any comments. But with this lighting, to your knowledge, were there any codes or other, I don't know, fatal flaws that might, the airport might raise that it interferes with their air traffic or their lighting or so forth?
I believe their letter back to us, the, the only comment was that, you know, sometimes when they do land planes from, I guess, from the west, which is, I don't, I can't recall what the percentage is, but it's a small percentage. That if there were any complaints by pilots, that we would look at dimming at certain times of the night, which we agreed to do. Well, if, if they give us a complaint, we'll, we'll address it.
Okay, and then also given that the airport, you know, it, it creates a lot of light in itself, it's all lit up at nighttime. How much brighter would this have to be to overcome that luminescence from the airport?
We don't believe there is, there's, there's going to be no impact. And I think that would have been found also in the sequel document, but there, there's frigging going to be no, no impact whatsoever.
Okay, I'd just be concerned if there's so much light from the airport, then you'd have to shine so much brighter to.
Yeah, it's not going to be bright, it's, it's, again, it's very small. I mean, it's like, it's like a TV screen, you know, it, with, from 250 feet away, it's no impact whatsoever.
Okay, that's all the questions I had. Can we go to public comment if there's any persons from the public wishing to comment on this project either in room or online?
I have one hand up on Zoom. Danielle, can you hear me or, sorry, Dashiel?
Yes, I can, thank you. Hello, my name is Dashiel Leeds, I'm the Conservation Coordinator for the Sierra Club Loma Prieta Chapter. Reducing light pollution and opposing projects with unnecessary light at night is a part of Sierra Club policy. And it's an issue we pursue in various cities throughout the Bay Area. We recently found out about this item and wish we could have engaged in this process sooner, but thank you for the opportunity to comment tonight. When people are polled on a large scale on this topic, they typically do not want digital billboards. As an example, San Jose conducted a poll of 2,000 participants and found that more than 85% of those surveyed were somewhat opposed or strongly opposed to adding new digital billboards along freeways. Even if the city promised to remove billboards elsewhere, San Jose eventually halted its plans to put digital billboards on private property as a result of community backlash. And as we discussed earlier, recently, electronic billboards were proposed in Gilroy and were eventually rejected. As our letter states, the impacts, including effects on circadian rhythms, metabolism and behavior in fish, birds, insects and other taxa, have been studied in several recent publications and major scientific journals. And contemporary scientific evidence shows that attraction to light is having a devastating and direct impact on insect numbers and diversity and indirect effects to entire ecosystems. This is an issue that affects all of us, humans and wildlife alike. Disruption of circadian rhythms in humans can lead to hormone disruption and increased risk of cancer in addition to other negative health impacts, including destruction of drivers. But light pollution is a cumulative issue. Every new piece of light-polluting infrastructure that we allow to be built contributes towards the overall problem. And existing light pollution should not give us justification to make the issue worse. So we ask you to please vote no on this item. And if the city does decide to proceed with this project, the environmental impacts do need to be studied in an environmental impact report. Impacts to biological resources can be lessened by limiting operating hours, turning the billboards off between the hours of 11:00 PM and, and 8:00 AM. Let's move towards a future where children can grow up with a clear view of the stars in the night sky. Thank you.
Anyone else online?
I don't see any more hands.
Okay, can we have a vote to close public comments?
I move to close public comment.
I can second it.
End of votes?
Commissioner Chan?
Yes.
Commissioner Del Negro?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Vice Chair Quigg? Chair Wong?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0, public comment is now closed.
Okay, moving on to commissioner comments, who would like to start?
Like one more clarifying question of staff, you know, I mean, obviously this is going to be on site of a Public Works facility. I'm sure we've vetted impacts, risk of impacts on facility operations. Was there anything identified that was a risk to, to operations of the plant?
No, actually, when the project was initially circulated, we had extensive conversations with Public Works evaluating the impacts. The, actually, the location of the billboard is a result of some of the evaluation with respect to the, the backup of the trucks. So there's a turning radius that needs to be maintained. So that's why billboard is, the, the post is located in the north, northwest corner to the extent that can be pushed back. So we, we, you know, looked at that and they found that there's enough turning radius for, for trucks to service the facility. But other than that, Public Works has reviewed it and didn't have any issues.
Also raised in the, Dashiel's comments was that there would be a need for a NEGDEC. Now, the applicant submitted a very hefty document here stating that there's a mitigated NEGDEC initial study. Would the Oversight Primacy Agency require an additional documentation or NEGDEC for this project?
At the.
Or EIR study, sorry.
The city hired FCS First Carbon Solutions to prepare the mitigated NEGDEC declaration. And that, that was done through the city. And EIR is a different document, but given the scope of the, the impacts, the appropriate document, after evaluating the impacts would, would be a mitigated NEGDEC declaration.
So is that a yes, EIR would be required or no?
No.
Okay.
If I could clarify, if I could clarify. Thank you. This isn't the city's independent study, it was not done by the applicant. It was prepared by, on behalf of the city, for the city, for the decision tonight. And the city's conclusion was that an EIR was not necessary because any potential impacts can be mitigated to a less than significant nature. So that's why we have the MND proposed before you this evening. I'm sorry, identified before you.
In this NEGDEC clarification, it's very hefty, maybe I'm missing it. I didn't see a significant section on the lights effects on neighboring properties or as Sierra Club mentions, the circadian rhythms, et cetera. Has that been addressed?
Elizabeth, can you speak to that? Elizabeth Johnson from the First Carbon Solutions will be able to address that.
Good evening, thank you. Yes, Chair Wong, we include a discussion of the impact, potential impacts of lighting in the aesthetics section, which is the first section of the analysis. And as the applicant mentioned, the value of the light emanating from the display is about three-foot candles. And it's, that's equivalent to lighting that is used in, in storage, a storage, so for example, three-foot candles.
I see, excuse me, it says 0.3 foot candles.
0.3, excuse me, yes, very small. Five-foot candles is, is a level of lighting that architects would use for a storage situation. 100-foot candles would be for a situation in a room where you're working. So you, you can see that it's much more intense, so to be in, the more foot candles, the, the more intense the light is, the brighter the light is. And this has been described as being equivalent to the light that emanates from a computer monitor, albeit on a large. So it's not going to actually interfere with planes because they're more than 250 feet away. As earlier mentioned, there's, there's no viable biological habitat on the site for any sensitive plants or animals. So the nearest kind of viable habitat is about 600 feet away diagonally across the freeway.
And also, there was a previous discussion about the impacts on the neighboring hotel across the street from the Milbury Station project. Find it, has there been more measurements or observations or renderings about how the residents from that property would view the board? And if they would get any direct glare or illumination from that?
The hotel guests?
Yes.
Okay, because there's no residences with, in the.
They're across, next to, adjacent building.
Yeah, okay, just wanted to be clear, we're not talking about residential uses, we're talking about hotel use. And the two visual simulation, simulations that you saw, although this were mislabeled of the north and south. Those are the only simulations that were prepared for this project. The city decided which, which views should be analyzed. So I think I'm going to have to go with the applicant about estimating whether that sign is visible. When you look at the simulation, which, can we put the simulation back up? The, the one that we have on the northbound, which is, oh, okay, so labeled northbound, but actually southbound. You can see that beyond Milbury Avenue, there are a lot of trees. I'm not sure if the hotel building is in here or not, but that's, that's the best that I can show you tonight about that view.
Chair Wong, so I believe you mentioned the, the hotel on the Milbury Station. So the, that hotel is TOD2, as we call it, and it's over 1,200 square, 1,200 feet away. And this sign is actually perpendicular to, to that hotel. So the sign's east-west and the hotel is north-south.
I should have asked this staff clarification earlier, but this, there is, this rendering has a Milbury sign, that's not going to be there, right? Correct?
That's, that's correct, that's just a blown-up version of the smaller logo on the top of the post, yes.
Okay.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Del Negro?
I guess, I'd be more worried if people at the Bayside Manor would be able to see the sign, but there's a wall on that side of the freeway or sound barrier for the airport. Is there any belief that you could actually see the sign from the cross? Okay, no homes out there are going to be impacted by seeing it, even if it's not a light obstacle, it's just not going to be, okay. Good, thank you. I'm going to get a head nod, it's not in the city.
Commissioner Chan?
How tall is the existing tree there relative to the sign? Does anyone know? Okay. Yeah, just, just to, to answer Commissioner Del Negro's question, I actually went to pick my wife up from the airport on Sunday, very early on Sunday morning. And knowing this proposal was coming before us, I was like, where is this sign going to be? And I caught out of the corner of my eye, the top of the oak tree. So you can see the top of the oak tree when you're driving on the on-ramp. I'm not sure if I wasn't planning to look for it, whether I would have seen it, but it was there. And then in terms of the habitat, what about the mud flats that are by Bay Shore Park, right? So when it's low tide, it's all exposed and, and when, in, in high tide, it comes much closer, like that's not, that's not a habitat?
It's, it's not habitat on the site or within the 250 feet of the site. It's not contiguous to any habitat that the site could affect.
Or the, like, the on-ramp to 101, there's like a, kind of a grassy, marshy area that the on-ramp loops around, that's also not a habitat?
It, it was not identified in the California database.
All right.
Any other commissioner comments, we're in the comment period and discussion thoughts?
Start discussion, maybe thinking about some of the elements here, you know, I don't see this as being a severely risky site for habitat. You know, I don't see this as being a severely risky site for habitat. I mean, it's a sewage plant. It's next to a freeway between an airport. I'm not seeing a real strong eco effect. It's a quarter mile from the mud flats. I just looked that up. And about the same distance across from the fields that are behind Bayside Manor with already the barrier wall that's there. I'm having a hard time grasping a real effect on an ecosystem that would be locally. Obviously, light pollution, the cumulative light pollution is always something I, I do think has value, that light is light. But a standard stationary sign with the projection lights, in my opinion, is more troublesome than a LED-based system that actually has a turnover. Those bright lights illuminating a stationary sign would be worse, in my opinion, for light pollution than this type of sign. I really don't see an argument against this right now that, that to me feels strong enough to turn down the project. And I see the positive argument of how this benefits the city and the economics locally. So at this point, you know, I'm, I'm really struggling to find a negative. I do see a lot of positive.
Anyone else? Nathan?
So I, I hear what you're saying, Commissioner Del Negro, in terms of the potentially limited local impact. But this is, you know, the, light pollution is ultimately cumulative, right? Like, every single light source in the Bay Area that isn't, that is dis, and I'm not saying that this applies to this sign, of course, but anyone, you know, any source of light that is undirected, shining at a bright intensity does degrade the night, the natural nighttime experience. So I think we have to be sensitive to that. You know, I am actually very interested in the idea of limiting when the sign is on. You know, the applicant mentioned, the Sierra Club letter mentions, turn it off between 11:00 PM and 8:00 AM. I'm not sure what the economic impact of that is. But the applicant mentioned that turning it off between 12:00 AM and 5:00 AM would be, represent a 10% decrease. So I think if, if, if we were going to approve this, I would be interested in at least exploring, limiting the hours when the sign could be on. And I'd be interested to hear from the commission, like, does the, does, is this a trade-off? Like, you know, those are the only numbers I've heard so far, right? Between 12, if the sign is off between 12 and 5, the economic impact is 10%. So, you know, $400,000 over, what was it, eight-year? If we extrapolate from the number that we, that we, that we just heard for the current sign, that would be $400,000 spread over eight years. So how do people feel about that?
Excuse me, just a sidebar. Roscoe, could you mind closing it or we're getting a draft in here? Any comments on Commissioner Chan's?
I'll go. One of the main drivers of putting this sign up is to generate revenue for the city. And bringing in hundreds of thousands of dollars a year is important to the city. And even a 10% decrease in that, I don't think is acceptable. I don't, the environment impacts seem to be very small. And the sign will bring in money that the city does need, for sure. And the ability for us to use the sign to promote ourselves as well is always, brings extra value. And because we don't just communicate to our residents, which of course we do, but if we're advertising one of our events, be it the Art and Wine Festival or Beats and Brews or the Lions Millbury Machines event, that's meant to draw people into Millbury, not just Millbury residents, but to communicate to the wider community. So that's important, too. We want to remind everybody how important we are being next to the airport and on a major commute route. And that's where a billboard like this probably ought to be to do what it's supposed to do. So I'm, I'm in favor of the billboard.
Do the chair, can I ask one more question of the, of the applicant? I'm curious also about the maintenance of this. Have you guys ever built a billboard, LED billboard, directly behind a airport where the jets are taking off? Can you imagine there's going to be increased cost and maintenance or effect on the materials or the LED lights? Because those jets are straight back behind, facing the billboard. So all maintenance costs, et cetera, is on you guys? Okay, good, thanks.
So just some of my thoughts are that, yes, the initial impression is that it was an ideal location, coming northbound, you'd see, coming just right after you go under the Millbury Avenue over, underpass. And, you know, if you're going 65 miles an hour, I estimate it, you probably have four seconds to see the sign, so it's not ideal. It's right next to the sewer plant. And so ideally, you want a billboard that represents the city in its best light. And I keep saying this about all the entrances and exits on Millbury is that they need to be cleaned up so that it represents our city. And if we're calling attention to a billboard that says Millbury and, you know, things you can do in Millbury or advertising, then people may associate that with a sewer plant that's sitting right there. So you're attracting people to view sewer plant that doesn't put our city in the best light. The light, you know, I keep saying also that I wish our baseline for lighting could go back, you know, almost even pre-airport days, that we can reduce the lighting in our city. But the fact is, is that we have a light emanating from the airport and it obscures the sky. You know, the, all the arguments about obscuring the stars, they're already obscured. It's right next to the airport. On the flip side, the applicant is saying that, you know, there's an agreement with the airport that it wouldn't interfere with the airport if, if it creates so much light that interferes with air traffic, then they would be required to dim it down. So that would bring it down to almost baseline of airport and not obstruct air traffic. And then another pro is that coming from southbound, the freeway southbound and the off-ramp to Millbury Avenue is a choke point for traffic. So cars during commute times come to a crawl. That, that advertising right there would be really advantageous to prospective clients going southbound. So that would be a positive for revenues. So there are pros, there's always pros and cons. The cons, if they're addressed or if there are fatal flaw, I would have serious reservations. But it appears to me that some of these cons kind of are moot issues with the light emanating from the airports. And, you know, it's taken into consideration, there's been a hefty document here looking at these issues, too. I'm not so happy about making sure that all the other stakeholders, the hotels, et cetera, there's only like a couple renderings. Would be good to have more renderings to see exactly what the neighbors would see because, you know, people like views, right? And if there's a big giant billboard in front of somebody's, we are not sure from what direction, we get to know that. But we want to put our city in the best light. And, you know, when we have projects, construction, things need to make sense. So if people are driving northbound and they see a sign, you know, that's obscured by an overpass, they may think, oh, what's Millbury doing? Does this make sense? Doesn't put us in the best light, but there's pros and cons, as I said, and I'm tending to tilt in favor of the pros for this. Anybody else? Okay, so any motions on this? We've had a very thorough study of this and discussion from the applicants and the staff.
I'll make a motion. Where is it? There it is. Move to approve the revolu, revolution of the Planning Commission, the city of Millbury approving the design review permit, conditional use permit, and sign permit to allow the installation of an outdoor advertising display sign located on city-owned property at the Millbury Water Pollution Control Plant at 400 East Millbury Ave in the Millbury Station area, specific plan, public facility zoning district. All the conditions attached.
And adoption of the mitigated negative declaration.
And then option two.
Make a second.
I have a second from Commissioner Del Negro and Carmen.
Commissioner Chan?
No.
Commissioner Del Negro?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Vice Chair Quigg?
Could you please repeat that into the mic?
Yes.
Thank you.
Chair Wong?
Yes.
Motion passes 4-1 with Commissioner Chan voting against.
And there's a, what is it, 30-day right of appeal?
10-day.
10-day, 10-day right of appeal. Noted. Okay, thank you, Millbury staff and applicants. Let's move on with our agenda. We'll move on to public hearing item B. Again, at this point, I'd like to pose a question to our city commissioners if there's been any ex parte communications with the applicant stakeholders' staff regarding this project that might require recusal or disclosure. Given none, if we could have the staff report?
I'd like to introduce Jennifer Lim, who will be presenting this item.
Good evening, Chair Wong and members of the Planning Commission. I'm Jennifer Lim, Assistant Planner with the city of Millbury. Before I continue on, I would just like to note there was a small typo on page two of the staff report under the location and surrounding uses section. It should say Crestview Drive instead of Sequoia Ave. The proposed project is located at 866 Crestview Drive. And this is a public hearing on a design review permit application to allow the construction of a new second-story addition and expansion in the rear, in the single-family residential R1 district zone. This slide shows a map of the location of the site. And the red dot shows that this project is located in the Glenview Highlands neighborhood. So the project is located in the R1 zone, single-family residential. It's a 7,500-square-foot interior lot. And the proposal is for construction of a 703-square-foot second-story addition and 1,005-square-foot rear expansion. This is the existing site plan. The existing rear deck, storage shed, and covered patio are to be removed. The proposed site plan meets all of the development standards, including the first and second-story setbacks, front yard landscaping, and rear yard open space requirement. Here is the proposed first-floor plan. There are four bedrooms, four bathrooms, a living room, dining room, kitchen, laundry room, and attached-to-car garage. The proposed second-floor plan includes a primary bedroom, primary bathroom, walk-in closet, and attached balcony. Here is the proposed front elevation. There is a combination of stucco and siding on the first and second stories, window shutters on the front windows, asphalt shingle roof, existing brick wall along the front and around the garage, existing garage door, and a new front entry door. Here's the proposed rear elevation, proposed left-side elevation, and proposed right-side elevation. These are 3D renderings of each elevation, just to give a better idea of what the project would look like. This slideshow shows the existing and proposed windows, window alignments between 866 Crestview Drive and the adjacent neighbors. The proposed project will not have significant impact on the privacy of the adjacent neighbors as the proposed windows are offset from the surrounding neighbors. And this is also shown on sheet A201 of the plans. Moving on to the solar access study, this is the existing shadow impacts on the left side. Those are the shadows during June and then on the right during December in each during the morning, noon, and late afternoon. These are the proposed solar study, solar access studies. And in the morning, the shadows are angled towards the front of the house and facing onto the street. During June, around noon, there are no shadow impacts. And in December, there are minor shadows on the adjacent neighbor at 872 Crestview. During the late afternoon, shadows are mostly projecting towards the rear yard. Based on this study, the proposed second story will not have significant impacts on the adjacent neighbors. Here is the proposed landscape plan. The existing peach tree will remain in the front yard. The project will add two new trees, mulch, grass, and pavers to the front yard and also adding three maple trees and new mulch in the rear yard. A total of six adjacent neighbor consultation forms were sent out to the adjacent neighbors. All six forms were returned in support of the project. Although all neighbors supported the project, the neighbor at 1345 Tuolumne Road originally expressed concerns about the potential privacy impacts at their rear bedroom as a result of the proposed second-story balcony. To address the neighbors' concerns, the proposed project will add three trees in the rear yard to help block that view from the second-story balcony. Also, I'd like to note that the balcony is more than 100 feet away from the rear neighbors, which will limit the privacy impacts. In order to approve the design review permit, the Planning Commission must make the following findings. Number one, the architectural landscaping and general appearance of the proposed building or structure and grounds are in keeping with the character of the neighborhood. Number two, the project complies with all applicable development regulations. Number three, the project will not cause significant impact, visual impact to the neighboring views of the, from the principal rooms of a residence. And number four, the proposal is not detrimental to the orderly, harmonious, and safe development of the city and will not impair the desirability of investment or occupation in the neighborhood in which the building or structure is proposed or erected. Staff finds that the Planning Commission can make all of these design review permit findings. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission receive the presentation, review the project, consider the public testimony, and approve the design review permit subject to the findings in the resolution in attachment one and subject to the conditions of approval to allow the construction of a new second-story addition and rear expansion in the single-family residential R1 zoning district. Staff is available for questions, as well as the architect is in person and available for any questions. Thank you.
Any questions for staff?
Can you please clarify on the, on the color board that you sent us or gave to us? It shows a stucco front, is that right?
Yes, it's a combination of stucco and siding to match the existing design of the house.
Okay, and then there's one that you showed up that has siding on it, then?
Yes.
Okay. Well, the one that was, that you showed us looked very, very busy for some reason or other. For some reason or other, however, that, on that one, it doesn't look that bad. Okay.
Yeah, it's a little hard to see there, but there is siding.
So I guess the clarification was that there's wood siding in the front and above the garage, but there's stucco on the sides and in the back also?
Correct.
Thank you. Commissioner Del Negro?
It must be the rendering coloring, but it looks like the front bedroom to the left side, bedroom number one, is not on the ground, that there's space underneath the bedroom. Strange in the pictures, but it does, there is a foundation going all the way down to the ground. It's not sticking out, is it? Just weird in the drawing when I look at it. It looks like there's literally, it's floating above the ground with space underneath it in some that's brick straight up and down, foundation around the rim of the room?
Yes.
Okay.
Commissioner Chan?
Yeah, just a clarifying question. So Attachment 5 shows a single tree in the backyard, but then in the plans and the, you know, the justification in the staff report about the, the lack of a privacy impact, it shows three trees. So just want to clarify, the, the plans are correct, and what's in the Attachment 5, the finished material sheet is not correct?
Yeah, that's correct. On the plans, there are three trees which will be planted in the rear yard.
Okay, thanks.
Any other clarifications? Questions for staff?
Can you pull up any pictures that actually show the front walkway to the front door? The renderings are just so dark, I have a hard time seeing anything in as far as, it looks like there might be some plants on the right and plants on the left, or is that stonework?
Yeah, could you please come to the property?
So that'd be great if the applicant can answer a question and also give a presentation.
Hi, hello everybody. My name is June. I'm the designer of this project. In terms of the questions, we will, we have proposed on the landscape board on the middle and the side of the to achieve the front yard landscape ratio.
The, the brick is, you're planning and painting the brick black?
Ah, yes.
Okay, and so that's why it's so dark, is because?
Yeah, it's just a rendering because of the printout issues.
As you walk up the walkway, on the right-hand side, left-hand side, there's some planters there, you're gonna have some landscape planting. The back behind those are also black brick?
Um, pretty much, because the building is actually has the ways for, so all the, the bottom part, they have a brick. We tried to continue this characteristic to preserve the styles. So we designed it to print it and match with the shingle roof.
Okay, thanks.
Other questions for the applicant? Can you tell us a little bit about the project overall and the residents?
Oh, the project actually started about two years ago. I mean, between, we have different planner to work on this project. We've been through Sam and Kristen, and they are no longer working in the city, so this is actually the witness of all of their comments. And we finally get to what we are, Nestor and Jennifer, to continue the applications, and yeah.
So I see the original plan dates of November 21, and then comments from last year, 2022 from the, can you talk about the changes that were made or the issues that were addressed, and has everything been resolved?
Yeah. Everything's been resolved, because, sorry, what was the question again?
Chair Wong, yeah, I can maybe touch upon that a little bit. Some of the changes that the applicant and the city worked on are, include the shutters that you see in the, on the front windows on the second floor and the first floor. That was added as a result of our conversations, just kind of clarifying the colors, materials, and then most significantly, kind of working with the applicants on mitigating any of those privacy concerns from the rear neighbor. So we asked for like a view study in the section showing the house and the elevation differences and the distances between the proposed balcony and the rear neighbor. I'd also wanted to credit the applicant, because as, as Commissioner knows, last meeting we had, we received direction that, you know, the commission wants to see the window privacy study for all applications. We communicated that to the applicant. They were far along in getting ready to, to submit their final plans for the Planning Commission. They turned it around and addressed those last-minute comments, so thank you, Marco Fung, for, for addressing that.
Okay, any other questions for the applicant? Okay, seeing none from the commission, can we open this up for public comments? Is there anybody in the room or online that would like to comment?
I don't see any hands on Zoom, and I don't have any speaker slips.
Okay, seeing none, is there need to close public comments?
I'll make a motion to close public comment. Second.
And vote?
Commissioner Chan?
Yes.
Commissioner Del Negro?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Vice Chair Quigg? Chair Wong?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0. Public comment is now closed.
And moving on to commission comments.
I'll start.
Great.
It's a lovely design. Kudos to you for getting six out of six, not only responses returned, but all positive from the neighbors. It's a good use of the property and a nice update, and well done.
Commissioner Del Negro?
In the renderings, the garage material, above the garage, does look different than the rest of the house, like the left-hand side. Are they the same? Again, it really comes down to these, the views that you've presented. It's hard to tell.
You mean the, the?
The header above the garage door itself? Can you pull up the front view? So on the, on the right-hand side, this large volume of space above the garage door, compared to like the eve above the window to the left, that does make it feel a little imbalanced. It's a strange difference between the, the left and right-hand side of the house. Wonder if there's some other thing you could do above that header of that garage, kind of tie it in to look similar at least in, in proportionality of the space above the door to the left-hand side where the window and the bedroom is. It seemed awkward to me, that little piece aesthetically. Other than that, the house is lovely. I was a little worried when I first saw it that it was going to be one of the box on tops, because it looked very narrow from the street this way, but then when I saw the lateral side views, you could see it's a much larger space structure. It's not that little box on top that some people used to do in the 80s in their houses. So I really much appreciated the design, in that it wasn't just a little piece. It was a nice, long part of the building. It drew out the length of the building, but this piece above the garage door still looks aesthetically odd to me. Other than that, the building looks pretty good. Yeah. The building looks really nice. I do like the, the upgrade to it, and I think it serves as a, I don't see any reason why overall it couldn't be approved, in my opinion.
Other comments? Mr. Quigg?
The more you look at it, the more it is a little off-sided. Is there a reason why it's so much higher?
Sorry, pardon?
Why? Why the top above the garage is so much higher?
Oh, because it's the, at the elevations, the garage is actually closer to the street than the
So it's just because it, it's actually only because we're looking at the rendering?
Yes.
Otherwise, they're more together?
They are actually really closing elevations.
Okay.
Through to the chair. The garage and that left side of the entry, they're existing, so he's not, not changing the, the plate height or anything, so it's an existing condition. And then, you know, I do agree that, you know, it does a little, look a little heavy up top. One suggestion is that they could extend the, the brick on both sides of the garage into form of like a thicker border along the top to consistently frame that garage, to reduce the, the portion above it.
Even a trellis or a little, you know, top, something that goes in that space, try and reduce the volume of it. I mean, there is a bigger header, you can see in the rendering, between the top of the garage door and the roofline eve. You can see there's a large space there compared to the bedroom where the windows, parallel to where the eaves come down. I think that's why it makes it feel a little heavier on that side, and I did see, obviously, the original, you know, it's actually a feature of this house from the get-go. So this isn't actually, this is a long-term oddity to the, the look of the home. I would like to see something over there to reduce that.
Kind of garage door lighting.
Yeah, something that just breaks up the space a little bit would be nice. And I do think what staff just said, you know, if you bring the brick facing all the way up to the roofline, it would look nice, too.
We can work with the applicant on options.
Any other comments? Okay, we're in discussion. Just last couple comments, you know, Commissioner Del Negro did point out that it does seem reced and dark. You know, you strive for curb appeal to make it look visually aesthetically appealing, appealing. So, you know, you'll obviously may have porch lights, and, you know, if you can do things to bring in more light, that's all in favor for that, to make your house, you know, really stand out, you know, in the neighborhood, uplift the neighborhood. There's some skylights there in the front. I know that the second story, we're trying to center it in the middle, there's balance here with the gables and the arches in the front. Everyone's striving to have higher ceilings, so I think this is another byproduct of that, where it does seem to be a little top-heavy because it protrudes up, because you're striving for those higher ceilings. With that, though, there's this, appears there's, there's a big atrium right there, right, in the middle, open area, and you have a window shining in. So I'm not sure if you really need the skylights, they look a little bit out of place with three little tiny skylights on the front of the roof there, when you'll have probably a lot of light coming in with this open atrium. So something to think about, minor comments, just to add value, but overall, yeah, and then we want to move these projects along. Great to see you address neighborhood concerns. Would like to have renderings that actually fit the actual image, because sometimes when we do renderings, you know, we don't have the right trees that are mentioned in the landscape plan, and here it's confusing to us, to what we're seeing on these plans, so just nitpicky, but overall, I don't see anything to hold you guys back any further from this. Anyone would like to make a motion?
If there's another comment, I'd like to take opportunity and make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to approve the applicant's resolution for the Planning Commission, City of Milbury, design review permit for the construction of a new second-story addition and rear expansion in the single-family residential R1 zoning district at 866 Crestview Drive.
I'll second.
Commissioner Chan?
Yes.
Commissioner Del Negro?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Vice Chair Quigg?
Yes.
Chair Wong?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Good luck on your project. Okay, we're going into the new business. Parklet Design Guidelines, informational item. This is such a study session to review and provide input on the draft parklet program guidelines. Roscoe?
Thank you, Chair Wong, and I'd like to introduce again Jennifer Lim, planner, will be presenting this, this item. Just to, just to remember, commissioners, this is, this is just a study session, informational item. We're here to just get feedback, and then, you know, the parklet program will be refined, and then we'll come back with, with the final product. So we're just kind of here to hear your thoughts and get your input.
Good evening again, Chair Wong and members of the Planning Commission. Jennifer Lim, Assistant Planner to the City of Milbury. Tonight, I'll be presenting an overview of the draft parklet program guidelines for the City of Milbury, again, as an informational item. The purpose of the parklet program guidelines is to provide an outline for the installation of parklets, and I would just like to note, we did receive one correspondence after the packet was posted regarding this item. The correspondence has been sent out to all of the planning commissioners this morning. Okay, so an overview of the presentation will cover introduction, location criteria, design elements, furnishing and fixtures, and permit requirements and process. So a parklet is a temporary use of space in the dedicated right-of-way for uses such as seating and outdoor dining. Parklets help bring people outdoors and provide activity to the street, creating a livelier downtown. Parklets tend to be most successful when they are located at high-turnover restaurants with limited seating capacity. Having parklets have really helped business owners, especially during the pandemic. All parklet installations will require a parklet encroachment permit, which will be covered in more detail later in the presentation. The city currently has five total parklets. The parklet at Ben Trey is planning to be removed. Four of these parklets were permitted during the pandemic. Attachment four of the packet has a list of photos and the current parklets in the city. Staff doesn't expect more than five or six parklets to be permitted in the public right-of-way per year. Parklets are allowed in the downtown mixed-use areas, including the El Camino Real Frontage Road. Parklets must be adjacent to the storefront and may only be installed along the frontage of the storefront for which the permit is being applied for. If a parklet encroachment, if a parklet encroaches on an adjacent storefront, or if parklets are shared with adjacent businesses, staff will consider these on a case-by-case basis. The maximum number of parking stalls is two parallel parking spaces or up to four perpendicular or angled parking spaces per parklet. If a parklet is being proposed on a corner location, the parklet shall provide a 25-foot setback from the nearest crosswalk. For travel lane setbacks, the minimum is one foot from the travel lane, and this is measured from the parking striping adjacent to the travel lane. For side setbacks, a minimum of two feet from the side to the nearest space. Some other location criteria the guidelines address is that the parklet shall not obstruct any utilities such as utility access panels or manholes, as well as fire hydrants. Parklets also cannot obstruct any bicycle lanes or paths. Parklets will be required to be of high-quality, durable, and attractive materials as they are part of the streetscape. The maintenance access and drainage and all other installation criteria will be reviewed by other city departments such as Public Works Building and the Fire Department. Parklet platforms must be ADA accessible, which meet, which shall meet the California Building Code and America's With Disabilities Act. Parklet platforms must also allow for maintenance access and stormwater drainage. For railings and enclosures, they should have reflectors or reflective tape at the corners. These really serve as a safety element and constructed of visually appealing materials. They must also be sturdy, and the height should not exceed 36 inches. If wind barriers are being proposed, they should also not exceed 36 inches. For traffic, traffic safety protections, wheel stops help protect against moving traffic and create a buffer for parallel parking spaces. For poster bollards, they provide a vertical element which help make parklets more visible to traffic. All furnishings and fixtures must be weighted down or stored inside for wind protection. Some examples include portable heat Some examples include portable heaters, umbrellas and tents. For portable heaters, they must be located at least two feet from flammable objects and umbrellas should be made from fire-resistant material. Tent structures should also meet fire-resistant fabric requirements. This is example of a parklet that has a wheel stop, which you could see on the right side of the photo, an orange flexible post and reflective tape on the corner of the parklet. And also this parklet has umbrellas. Parklet permits can be renewed annually, um, starting and ending on January 1st and this is usually the slow period for when parklets are least likely to be used. For parklet requirements, a parklet encroachment permit is required for all parklet installations. The applicant must submit plans of the proposed layout of the parklet and the applicant shall provide a material palette for staff to review. For the permit process, applicants will apply and city departments will review and provide comments until all comments have been addressed and the application is ready to be approved. Parklets must also be maintained for cleanliness, safety and accessibility. Um, failure to maintain, these parklets may lose eligibility for renewal or subject to citation. Um, the applicant must also notify the city if and when they decide to remove their parklet. So for planning commission action, staff recommends the planning commission review and provide input on the draft parklet program guidelines. And for next steps, after reviewing input from, after receiving input from the planning commission, staff will finalize the parklet program guidelines and will return with the permit process. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Jennifer. Uh, any questions, clarifications from the commission? Nathan?
Yeah, I have some, I have a question. So you mentioned that the, um, this program only applied to the downtown mixed-use area? Is there no eligible street at the north end of the city, like Park Boulevard area?
Um, no, currently, um, we're considering most of, all of Broadway and the El Camino Real Frontage Road, but we could, um, definitely extend it, um, to cover more of the city.
Yeah, I think, well, I'll, I'll save that for substitute discussion. Um, so you mentioned that the permit, uh, applies Jan 1 to Jan 1. Um, so what, what happens if a business decides halfway through the year, oh, I would really like to have a parklet now? Would they have to wait until the next January or could they get a permit halfway through the year and maybe they'd have a prorated, uh, pay a prorated fee for the period of time that they, remainder of the year that they received the permit in?
Yeah, I, I don't see any problem with doing that.
Yeah, I think the, the idea is that the, um, permits are renewed annually. So, um, you know, somebody want to come in in July and say, I want to put a permit, um, that's not going to be a problem. They don't have to wait until January 1. It's just the annual renewal of the permit is, it's kind of what we're trying to get at.
And then, you know, it takes time to deconstruct these spaces. So let's say that they, you know, a business starting in beginning of December decided that they didn't want to renew their permit on Jan 1, would they have to completely deconstruct the parklet by Jan 1? Um, or would they be able to use it up until a certain date closer to Jan 1 and there'd be some grace period after Jan 1 where they'd be able to deconstruct it?
I don't think we've flushed out all of those details.
Fair enough, yeah. That's a pretty detailed, I mean, we work with everybody on a case-by-case basis. It doesn't matter if you're getting a hot water heater permit or a parklet. Um, so, you know, if those situations arise, we always do work with people, you know, we don't want to penalize anyone.
In terms of the, uh, the 15-foot clearance, what sort of clearance, like what are some comparable clearances that have to mean, sorry, I should clarify, the 15-foot clearance from fire hydrants, like that was something that, uh, the commenter brought up, like what's, yeah, I, I'd be curious to know also, like what, what sort of clearances do we require for parking spaces from fire hydrants right now?
Um, what we have in here is what the fire code requires. I don't know if the fire code has a code, you know, specific to a parking space, but what we have is what applies to a parklet. I think that might be everything that I have for now. Thanks.
Commissioner Del Negro?
Um, parklets cannot obstruct a bicycle lane or path. Um, does that mean they cannot be built on a street where there is a bike route? Right now, we do not currently have any bike routes on the streets that we're talking about, but I think it's more than just obstructing a path or a lane. It's that it would create more, um, dynamic stress on the pedestrian route or the bike route if it was on a route street. So I, I think I'd like a little more language in that direction that it, that we don't allow them on route streets.
Yeah, I, um, on Saturday night, I ate on, in Oakland, in a parklet on Telegraph and a really good example is Telegraph Avenue because they have protected bike lanes where the parking spaces, the, the bike lane is in between the parking space and the sidewalk. And so as a result, the way that this would be applied is the parklet would be not right up flush with the curb. It's actually has to be separated. So the bike lane goes between the parklet and the curb. Um, so that's, we don't have a situation like that in Millbrae at the moment, but I mean hypothetically, that's what the goal is.
As a cyclist and as former, I'd say never, ever allow that to happen.
Yeah, it's not ideal.
You're creating a situation where pedestrians cross.
Yeah.
People that are trafficking and going on.
Absolutely. It's not an ideal situation. Fortunately, we just don't have that, but we don't want the bicyclist in the parklet to be in a position where there is that kind of conflict.
I guess as we design, I guess, a document, I'd like it to incorporate that, you know, there is also, you know, no, no parkits are built on bike routes, designated bike routes.
Yeah, absolutely. We don't want to see the conflict between bicyclists and diners.
I just ask, let's add some language in there.
Yeah, I think that's a really good suggestion.
The, I like the 25-foot from a, from a corner where there's a crosswalk, that was definitely a nice clearance space. I always worry about people coming out from parklets that I've seen before. Um, I guess the one thing, I mean, I, tell me about the limited number of parklets allowed. We're only allowed to have how many in the city at any one time? Was there a number that I heard?
Uh, we don't have a limit currently.
Is there a limit per block?
No, we don't have that right now.
All right. Um, so that's good. I'm glad that there's not going to be some waitlist waiting for somebody to have one parklet go down, so it'll come up. Um, and equal opportunity for bar, the parklets is nice. Um, although, um, one thing I don't like so far about our current, I mean, I love parklets, I think it's a great plan, I'd love to have them stay in the city. Um, nothing makes you want to be downtown more than be able to sit and eat and be outdoors in the spaces. Um, but the problem we have is that almost every parklet is so different in its look and state of quality in which they're built, that a design standard, um, I don't think just, doesn't go as far as the design standard we're doing here, it doesn't go as far. I'd like to actually have the city to have a code on what permissible materials and a selection that they're allowed. This is something built on public space. I know it's used by the restaurant, but it doesn't represent the restaurant's aesthetic, represents the city's aesthetic. I'd like it to be even more controlled than we're proposing here as far as what materials can be used and structure shapes. Now, what they put as far as furniture out there and trees and, and that's up to them, that defines their space. But the structure itself, I'd like to see uniformity, a city uniformity to it because then it creates a sense of, of how that city space is designed as a district. Um, and again, it's on city property, city, you know, owned space. Um, I don't know if somebody would agree or disagree with me on that, but I, I just, I'd like to see some uniformity in style as far as the structure, but individual flavor as far as how they decorate the structure. I'll stop my comments for now.
Yeah, given this is a study session, it's good to hear the feedback and, Maureen?
I don't hate the idea of uniformity, but I worry about the cost to the businesses. Will this process be expensive? Will the permit itself be expensive? If we specify a limited set of materials, will they be cost prohibitive? Just be sensitive to that because, you know, telling people how much money they have to spend is sometimes a problem and it could diminish them and make them go away again. Um, I believe it said there'd be a 21-day turnaround on a permit review. Is that, did I read that right?
Uh, yes, that's correct.
That seems pretty fast, I like that. Um, when case-by-case comes up, does that slow it down or are you, within the 21 days regardless of what somebody's brought, that you can pretty much get it done? That's good. Because like you say, there aren't going to be that many, it's not going to be overwhelming, so, okay. And has any consideration been given to whether the existing ones would come anywhere near passing muster? For now, not on like design uniformity, but just on the size and shape in terms of, you know, 15 feet from here, one foot from there, blah, blah. Is anybody even close or are they all getting torn down and starting over? No? Oh, good. All right, that makes me happy. And, um, if, it says you have to hire an architect or civil engineer or something, um, if they've already existing, and this may only count for the ones that are existing, but if they didn't use an architect in the first place, that'll be okay and will having to hire an architect also raise the cost of building a new one, should a new restaurant come in or decide, an existing restaurant decide to put one in? How much does that add to their?
Yeah, we, we, um, aren't requiring it, um, we recommend it, but, you know, yeah, it's, it's not a mandate.
Okay, I thought I said it was, but that's fine. Just, and it, just, so they can get it done is what matters the most to me. Thank you.
Yes, um, do you feel that the six that are there are gonna renew the parklets or that they will continue to have them? Have you talked to any of them?
I can, I can comment. I, I think it, it depends on what we come up with for the final parklet cost.
Yeah.
And I'm, I want to let the commissioners know that right now, we're in the process of doing a downtown parking study. And we don't have the data yet, but one of the things that we're looking at is what's the value of a parking space. And so what we plan on doing is once we get that data from the parking study, we'll apply that to the cost of an encroachment permit because effectively people are renting, right now, I mean, they're renting the use of the public right-of-way for parklets for free because we don't charge anything. Um, and those parking spaces downtown have a value. We have to be equitable, obviously. Um, all the businesses downtown understand the value of their parking spaces, you know? Uh, uh, so one of, you know, some of the comments that we've gotten in the past from downtown businesses were concerns about parklets using up valuable parking spaces. So what we want to do is find out what the value of that space is and then charge an appropriate rental fee for the use of that space. That being said, I think once we come up with that number, there may be some parklets that want to shrink because if we charge on a per-space basis, they may find out that having three spaces is kind of expensive, but maybe two works for them. So it really, I think it really comes down to just a value proposition. Some of the businesses may find out that that's a really good value and they may want to, to, to have a, um, have this parklet, some of them might want to shrink their parklet or modify it, some of them might want to get rid of it, I don't know. But, um, but I think that the value that we come up with will probably determine that, uh, how, how people go forward. My hunch is we might see a few businesses shrink their parklet down a little bit. You know, if they've got four spaces now, they might want just two. It depends on how much seating they, they want.
Yes.
Um, when this comes back, can you also collect data on, um, how much other cities are charging for their permits, just as, you know, a nice sample, just to give us an idea?
That's a really good, um, that's a really good suggestion, yeah. Um, what, what we're looking at is to base it on, um, the, uh, how much people have to pay if we, we do charge for parking downtown because we're, our goal is to get turnover.
Catherine?
I don't know what's the matter with my throat tonight, um, but, um, I had spoken with a friend who has a business in San Mateo, um, and they were requiring insurance. Are we going to be requiring that?
Yes, we already do. So all of the businesses that have a parklet are required to have, uh, a certificate of insurance on file with the city. So that's already been a requirement, we did that during COVID, that'll continue moving forward. Um, that's standard because anytime you do something in the public right-of-way, um, you have to, if the city allows you to do something in the right-of-way, whether it's a concert or anything, you have to have that.
Get listed on here, did I miss it?
Yeah, it, it is, in fact, in the, in the guidebook that Jennifer's prepared for you.
And all you need is a certificate of insurance, are you going to require an amount?
We already have an amount, uh, established, I can't remember off the top of my head what it is, but yes, it's, it's a standard amount anytime you do something in the right-of-way. And I think, um, a lot of businesses already have that level of coverage anyway.
Chris?
Permits, are they transferable, grandfathered in, transferable to business-to-business if they turn over?
Well, we, we're going to do this, we propose to do this on an annual renewal basis. So, um, if there was a new business, yeah, if they had an existing permit for the year, it would.
If one of the old restaurants didn't meet whatever code we decide is going to be stylistic or required of it, would it be grandfathered in, that they keep the old materials, the old style or the old shape?
We, we, we haven't really thought about that, but, um, you know, one, one option is that, yeah, we could have kind of like, um, kind of amnesty program for the existing ones. Um, you know, that, I don't think that there's, we, we have a handful of them, so there's not a lot, I don't really see, there might be some aesthetic modifications that we'll ask of them, but, um, if they're working currently today, um, we could have or build in some sort of amnesty program to, to leave the existing ones.
Minimum number of stalls, yeah, obviously you can see they go down, I mean, obviously a one-stall one would look really awkward and be very, very odd. I'd, I hate to see a one-stall, maybe there should be a minimum.
Uh, we do have a one-stall parklet, uh, Nine Noodles.
Nine Noodles is a single stall?
It's a one-stall, and they also have a conditional use permit for that parklet, they're, they predated our.
Can we pull that one up? Do we have a picture of that?
Yeah. They predated the, um, uh, the, the temporary program because they were approved before COVID. So, uh, they're actually, I think they're the only one, right? Yeah, they're the only, um, parklet that was approved by the commission with a conditional use permit.
The noodle house one?
Uh, yeah, Nine Noodles.
Nine Noodles?
Yeah.
Oh, it's parallel parking, yeah.
It's parallel.
Okay, that's right. It does look as odd, like a one-angle parking would be very awkward.
Yeah.
I think they should have a minimum storefrontage, like spaced linear one. I'd say a one-narrow angle would be untenable.
Yeah, the angled ones were, you'll, you'll need to, to make it viable at least two or three. Um, the specific plan envisions parallel parking on the downtown, so in that case.
One parallel parking would be sufficient as far as angle parking, it'd have to be at least two.
Yeah.
And, you know, I, I did talk about some base materials or, you know, some limited more structure. I could see how, you know, letting them be free up top, what they want to do stylistically, but maybe like the base wall as a standard on height and outside material, something that's outward. I mean, there's one that we have here that has plywood, it looks just absolutely awful.
Yeah.
And, and that's what I'm kind of getting at, is that we have to have some type of common theme to our downtown. I could see definitely giving a lot more freedom about materials, but just having a standard for at least the base wall.
Yes, Maureen?
I'm not a space heater expert, so we're talked about space heaters, okay, propane heaters, not good. Tell me the difference, please?
Open flame.
So like, so like those bar-like ones, are those electric or something, the ones I see? Is that what you're talking about?
Usually they are, yes.
Okay. Other, not the little?
Correct.
Got it.
Yeah, um, that's a common question, yes.
Um, actually, so given this is a study session, you know, we're not voting on anything, um, we're here to discuss our ideas and I really appreciate the staff's engagement to get our, um, comments before we finalize this. You know, obviously this is, uh, documents date September 23, but in reality, we should just mark it draft, uh, the date and then if we intend to finalize it September 23, that's great so that we can get public comment and all our comments included into this process. Uh, before we go on with more comments, do we have any other public persons wishing to comment on this? Before we go on with more comments, do we have any other public persons wishing to comment on this? Okay, so I don't think we have a formal process for a study session to close public comment, do we? No. So let's continue, just to close off the comments from the commissioners. Nathan, would you like to give yours?
Yeah, I have just one or two more clarifying questions before I kind of give my substantive comments. So how does this program apply to other city-owned, like, surfaces? So like, does this apply if a business has a very generous sidewalk or bulb? And they, maybe they want to rent that? Or maybe they're next to a city-owned parking lot and they think they might want to convert stalls in the parking lot into a parklet? Does, does this program apply to that? Or is it only parking spaces in the street?
This is intended for parklets in the public right of way.
So that doesn't, so are city-owned parking lots in the public right of way? Are sidewalks in the public right of way?
Somebody came in and they wanted a parklet in a city parking lot, we would treat it the same as the public right of way.
All right.
So, I, I mean, hypothetically, yeah, we would, we would entertain that proposal for sure. But I, I don't know if that's likely to happen. I don't know.
But if that were the case, where would the restaurant be?
It'd have to be.
So it's kind of?
I mean, I could think of at least one or two cases where that would, it might work better for them to rent the city-owned parking lot stall than something out on the street.
Yeah. If we, you know, there's a couple of businesses that are adjacent to the city lots. And, you know, if like a wine bar, I'm thinking of, wanted to do a parklet on the, on a space closest to them next, on the city lot. Yeah, we would, we would apply these same guidelines.
Then on to like, just the final comments I want to make. So I've heard Commissioner Del Negro and Commissioner Quigg talk quite a bit about standards for parklets. I, I would also be in favor of them. I think the more we have objective standards set, businesses up for success, the better. I mentioned to staff earlier today that in Campbell, they actually have pre-approved designs. You can choose from a set of four, I believe. And they even, they chose to use their American Rescue Package funding to help subsidize the cost of repairing those. I think, you know, that's a city that seems to be encouraging them. I do, so I think that's a good example. I do want to return to an example that Commissioner Davis brought up earlier. And I, I know I've, this has probably been emphasized, but I think it's worth emphasizing again. You know, we have an experience in a neighboring city where they applied permanent code to the parklets. And the response of most of the businesses unfortunately was to tear them all out. Like, let's make sure that that doesn't happen in Millbrae. Uh, what else was I gonna say? Oh, I think, I think it would be, you know, given how multicultural our city is, you know, if we could localize the draft guidelines, I think that would be a very beneficial for our business owners also. So that's all I had to say. Thanks.
Catherine?
One more comment. I just hope that, as Maureen had said, that it is affordable. You don't want to make it unaffordable if it's working. I, I think the parklets are really great. Millbrae's a little on the cusp weather-wise, you know, to be outside. But we do get some really great days. And I, I don't know, I think I like, I, I know I like them because it kind of gives a better feel. Now that some of them have come out, it's like, it looks cars and cars. So I, I hope we can make it affordable and we keep what we have. And maybe other people might want to come up with them once they see they really work after a couple of years.
I guess Nathan's point about the city locally who incentivized people to tear them all out, I understand a lot of that was about the operating costs, the permit costs. It was not especially the build itself. They just, I guess, were too heavy-handed as far as applying costs. And I know how much a parking lot, a parking spot can be worth. I mean, it's a lot of money sometimes. I'm not sure we need to recoup the entire value of a parking stall because they do also increase the revenue offset. So I'd say this, be timid about how we set that boundary financially, incentivize instead of destroy.
And just to, so my thoughts. Try, when you're preparing the document, to always remember that you're trying to encourage visitors to Millbrae. You want to support our businesses. Of course, you want to improve Millbrae. If that's how you're coming to the table, you'll probably get there. And, yeah, I was gonna say the same thing, that while the parking space is worth something, the restaurants do generate revenue at the same time. So there's got to be a balance there. Terrific. Thank you.
I would also say that the revenue they generate isn't always direct. You know, you go out eating and you also go down shopping as well, or you spend time downtown.
Right. And you wander down and go get an ice cream. Or, oh, I got to run into Safeway, or, you know, whatever it is, so.
I think we just all allowed it, like, in Millbrae Square? You know, like where Starbucks is and stuff? That's all in the, in the right of way also, isn't it?
Those are actually private streets. When you get closer in front of Starbucks down through Trader Joe's and living spaces. So that section of Broadway is not a public right of way. And so those, those are, those are why the parklets in that area are permanent improvements. They're actually.
Yeah, but we had approved those, if I'm not mistaken.
You did. Absolutely, you did. But those are a little bit different because they're, they're, they're a permanent feature of the shopping center. Yeah, that's, so that's, that's why.
Well, all of our downtown could look like that.
It's a very attractive design. It's got stacked stone and ice benches. Definitely, that's an inspiration for, you know, our guidelines as far, as far as quality goes. But of course, you know, pouring concrete for a temporary structure isn't the most.
Yeah.
Chair, is there any other code for lighting them or keeping them lit at night? I mean, one of the things obviously I worry about is homelessness. And the city has, you know, gotten pretty bad. Are we creating alcoves for people to come in and sleep in? Should there be a requirement for lighting hours or surveillance of some, some help? I mean, what could help us to reduce that risk?
Can I ask a follow-up? Has it been a problem yet?
That's a good question.
Well, we've heard of one. You know, and then, you know, that's since COVID. But that's not to say that it won't happen again.
I mean, Fiddler's locks theirs up. I've seen it locked up. I mean, others could put up some sort of barrier.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think it's certainly reasonable and feasible for a business owner to put, for example, a chain across their parklet. Sometimes they do lock up their furniture. You've probably seen it. So the solution may be what you just said, is just something simple. Do you feel that that should be in the guidelines as a, as a requirement?
Maybe some sense of a security plan if something does happen, what they'll do, or, you know, mitigations if, if there is some incident, how they're gonna mitigate it and correctively fix it in the long term. I think, you know, waiting till it happens once, I guess that's okay. But, you know, making sure that there's a corrective action afterwards.
We could ask the applicant to provide their plan on how to address that, kind of leave it up to them, you know, on a case-by-case basis. Some applicants may decide to have a barrier or, you know, lock up the furniture, you know, and.
Yeah, it wouldn't be heavy-handed, but just at least make sure that they're aware that they need to have some forward plan in case something does happen.
In our experience, the, the few incidents that have happened were with parklets that were designed with a very heavily screened wall. So there was private, you know, you couldn't see through it.
Well, privacy, yeah.
Correct. Whereas, for example, if they had like some, some railing that you could see through, we haven't seen that. It's usually people that are hiding.
Yeah.
And there are also in parklets that they don't, they're not using. So if the business hasn't used that parklet for many, many months, that's, those are, it's not one that like Fiddler's where they're using it constantly every day. It's the ones that just have been kind of mothballed for a while. So that's definitely another factor. But that's a really good, a really good point.
And to your, to the lack of propane use. I was just eating in San Carlos the other night at a place called Town. They have propane out front in their parklets. It didn't, it didn't seem to be abnormal to see that. But we've decided that's not something we want to take a risk at, is what you're saying.
Um, it's with the roof material that's more of a problem. If it's open air, I don't know if, we'd have to reach out to Central County Fire and see.
Obviously, I'd be, yeah, what's fire code gonna say to us? But also, what's the cost of having an electric versus a propane heater? And of course, there's an environmental thing there too. You know, maybe electric's a little safer, better for the environment. Maybe we should be promoting going down the electric route just simply for that sake.
Yeah, I, that's a good, that's a good question. I think, we know for a fact that propane isn't gonna work if you have a roof because you can't put it underneath the roof, so.
Back to the inappropriate, unauthorized use of a, of a parklet during the evening hours. Probably not part of the guidelines? You might just want to remind them it can be a problem. But, I mean, I feel like there's already ordinances that could, you know, and other solutions that already exist. So we probably don't have to reinvent the wheel here.
Yeah.
Okay, I'd like to just wrap up then with a few other comments. You know, there's so many guidelines out there. Cities have their own guidelines, so it's great we're catching up. We only have a few of these parklets, but we still want to apply good design practices. And, you know, we can incorporate comments or ideas from these other city guidelines. But I think for us, my recommendation is safety, safety, safety. You know, these cones may not be the best idea. I wouldn't recommend, you know, recommending that they put in cones. Something more sturdy, a bollard right here, although that's a big construction project tearing up the street. But maybe reflector tape around it. Instead of the rubber curbs, I'd recommend use heavier, heftier concrete ones, just like in parking lots, the little curbs around it so that no one drives into them. Liability insurance, as mentioned. Have verbiage to protect the city. You know, avoiding lawsuits or design that would create a nuisance or a hazard. If someone crashed into this, we don't want the city to take on the liability. Land is a benefit, right? This is something that we're giving to them, so that's valuable territory. If they have that, it increases their square footage of their business. So they should be creating more revenues. If they aren't creating revenues, you know, there should be statements, they should all be revocable. Revocable, revocable, revocable. If it's substandard, not maintained, creates a hazard or a nuisance, let them know. It's, it's, you know, a benefit for them. And if they don't develop it properly, that they should either be generating monies and be good for their business. But if it's not, they could detract from our city. Protection for the city, you know, statements such as ADA compliant and all applicable city codes, you know, some blanket statements like that, so it protects us. Instead of having an engineer or architect, licensed architect, do that, which is substantial cost, maybe just licensed contractor. You know, wouldn't want somebody just getting a hammer and just start nailing pieces of wood together. So I think a licensed contractor might be reasonable to put in a requirement for their construction. At least so it doesn't fall down and it's sturdy and they know the codes and they know how to build something too. Let's see here, some nitpicky things like, you know, aesthetics. I would believe it should be finished, should be stained, should be painted, shouldn't use substandard material like plywood, something nice. The safety aspect again, shouldn't have openings to the street where someone's gonna walk out into the middle of traffic. So I know that we have this nice rendering. Unfortunately, it's not in, in our city. But ideally, we want a picture of something nice, designed. And you can highlight our businesses, you know, if one of them has really nice design. And put it on the front. Stained finish, maintenance clauses. Maybe something for no signage. I don't know if we're only advertising all over these or people making money off of that. Noise, speakers, might put something in there about limiting that being a nuisance. You don't want to be something that, again, the neighboring businesses won't complain or say it's, it's disrupting their business too. So, sorry, I speak really fast, but those are just a few comments there.
I actually had to go back and look. I was happy to see that there's a 10-foot requirement for electrical connection. It has to be 10 feet high. Can't be on the sidewalk with a step over. It literally has to be. That was nice to see that that was included as a requirement. I didn't see anything about waste management out in these things. You know, we do see that there's a lot of waste. Do you require that there's a trash can in there? Or at least for the staff to have a place to go trash out?
Right. Some cities require a waste receptacle.
Yeah. I didn't see anything on there about that.
Yeah, weekly maintenance or some maintenance schedule that they have to provide. Drainage, going to utilities, should be free-flowing to drains, not just, not covering the storm drain, but allowing the drainage to flow freely. There's all types of other city guidelines, so I'm just pulling off from other cities too.
I guess what I like is Nathan said earlier, which was, you know, trying to help them to, to meet some requirement and promote their help to, to be successful. And so that it's not a problem in the future. All these things we're talking about, I think, can really help without being too, I guess, too over-regulating detail-wise that they have to have checked every single box on a plan.
Last call?
Yeah, just one more thing I just thought of. Sorry. Do you think we could, do you think it's reasonable to offer the option to get a parklet permitted for longer than a year at a time in the event that a business chooses to really invest in creating a, a much more durable parklet space? There are some that I've seen in San Francisco, for example, that, you know, they, they're, they can be deconstructed, but they're, they seem very semi-permanent. So if they're gonna make that investment, then, or if they would like to make that investment, can we?
Yeah, I mean, even with the renewal, that doesn't mean you can't make that investment. It's not like your renewal's gonna get turned down. We just want to have the, the period to be one year. And January is the ideal time because in the middle of winter is when people aren't using their parklet. Just like any other permit, if it's temporary, you have to renew it regularly. That's, that's the whole point of a temporary permit. There, if you don't, it'd be permanent. And, and that's not really what, we don't want to lock somebody into the public right of way, obviously, because it's, it's, it's temporary. So that's why, why we came up with the one-year thing. But again, that doesn't prevent someone from, you know, having high-quality materials, you know, something that's gonna be there for the long haul.
Okay, thank you, everybody. Any other clarifications from staff? This next step, will these comments be incorporated, go to city council? Or what's the process for finishing this off?
Yeah, we'll, we'll take this feedback and incorporate comments we heard this evening. And then we'll take the guidelines to the city council for a city session.
Okay, great. And make sure to mark draft and then let them know they have the chance to comment. And also for a public comment too. It'd be great to post this also. Moving on to agenda item six for staff updates.
Okay, so staff updates. We got a few updates tonight. August 7th is the next scheduled planning commission meeting. We have no items for that meeting, so that meeting will be canceled. August 21st, we will likely have that meeting. The Public Works Department is conducting a parking study of downtown and have a survey to understand the issues in downtown. It's about a five-minute survey. And it can be accessed by going to www.surveymonkey.com/r, the letter R, slash Millbrae Parking. And it's also on the city's website. You Google Millbrae Parking Survey and it'll show up. So that will, that survey will be up probably to the end of the month. So far, we have pretty good turnout. We have over 200 responses so far, so.
We tried, we received an email on it, and we tried to click the link and it didn't work. Does, you know why it might not happen?
Try again. I can, I can send you another link. Maybe that one didn't work.
Yeah, and I think it was when we were out of town.
Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay. And the city also received two grants from MTC, one for $600,000 to amend the stationary specific plan to create a design framework for one intermodal transit station to serve the needs of high-speed rail, Caltrain, and BART. So we're, we're excited about that, and that'll allow us to initiate that process of hiring consultants to amend that, to provide, you know, an amendment to that, to the station plan. It'll be a multi-year effort, so, you know, with these things, it's going to be a lot of coordination with different transit agencies. But, so we're excited about that. We got the maximum amount. The other amount of $200,000 was for the implementation of the Streetscape Plan in El Comino Real. So that's for, so very, very happy about that. One other announcement regarding, this is regarding the Alexandria development. So the, the developers have informed the city that they're, they're, they're going to construct a, a parking lot for, the current building that's under construction will be finished out. There's two other buildings and a parking garage included in that whole project. And they've indicated to us that they're going to temporarily put a temporary parking lot until they receive enough interest in leases to, to justify the construction of the rest of the buildings. So they will, they will be able to provide the parking on the site, and they kind of wanted to just use that parking, to provide the parking for their current tenant. When they get additional tenants, they will move forward with the rest of the buildings. So that, and that, with that, that is the update that I have this evening. And thank you, Commissioner Del Negro, for your service here with the city of Millbrae. I've known you since, you know, your time here in the commission, I think it was a couple of years. You've also served in the Parks and Recreation Commission since 2014, so a lot of service to the city. Thank you very much for your service to us, and we'll be, we'll be sad to see you go, but I'm sure you'll be very happy in your new city as well.
Honest, the pleasure's mine. City staff has done a fantastic job over the years on every project I've ever worked on. I've always been very impressed working with staff and how hard they're willing to work and meet questions and find solutions. So really, it's been my pleasure. Thanks.
And, yeah, just appreciate your thoroughness in going through all these documents. Very hefty. You've always been very consistent in writing detailed comments. And I think going forward, we'll always remember to keep in mind bicycle lanes, and when you bicycle back into Millbrae, we'll be thinking, trying to take care of you in the future on these projects.
Still keeping my house in Millbrae. I'll be, possibly moving back in the future.
When the kids are all grown up.
When the kids are grown up, huh?
Okay. Agenda item number seven, planning commissioner announcements. Any announcements? I know that there is some training coming up, so we'll need to make sure we check the emails for those opportunities. Beats and Brews had their day for July, 4th of July, so appreciate the city working on these projects. Yeah, and a reminder to stay cool out there and enjoy our city. Thank you. Thank you very much. I'm adjourning the planning commission. Thank you.
Thank you.